Let's call the meeting to order. I want to welcome everyone, and this is our regular meeting. And we kindly apologize for the crowdedness, but the court needed the courtroom, and so we're back down here. So I hope you don't mind us being crowded together a little bit. Steve Snyder is going to lead us in the pledge allegiance, and Kelly's going to offer prayer. Would everyone please stand?
I'll go first. You'll pray first?
Yes, go ahead.
If you'll join me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for the many blessings that you give us, Lord. I thank you for the sunshine as we were out and about this morning, that we were reminded that you're still in control. Lord, I ask that you will be with the commissioners today as they conduct the county business, and be with us as we leave, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Now, Mr. Commissioner? Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder, and Kelly. Okay?
Yep.
Okay. Motion?
I move to that we approve the minutes for the Tuesday, September 25th County Commission meeting.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Settlements of estates. Joni Hare, our judiciary supervisor.
I'm presenting the following estates for final settlement. Ronald J. Kramer, Ida Garten, Linda May Hammock, Juanita Rebecca Long, Georgie L. Smith, Wanda D. Wilson.
Motion?
I'll move that we approve the final settlements as presented.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Exonerations, county splits, consolidations, as presented by the assessor, Mr. Joe Darnell. I move that we approve those as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Arts and rec transfers, financials, Ms. Lattermille.
We have the following arts and rec transfer from savings to checking. Rosford Main Street, $2,800, that's for 1819 Heritage Days. Greenbrier County Arts and Rec Director, $75, that's for a cell phone, for a total of $2,875 from savings to checking.
Okay. I would move that we transferred $2,875 from savings to checking to pay these two arts and rec fees. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
We have the following budget revisions. First one is to increase court security overtime, $30. That was a overtime reimbursement from the Greenbrier County Republican Club. The second one is to increase Elections Departmental Supplies and Materials by $57,911.70. That's a grant check from Secretary of State's office that was awarded to the county clerk for election upgrades. That's the only two there is.
Okay. Motion?
I'll move that we approve the budget revisions as presented.
Okay.
And those, that $57,911, that was the new...
That was the state's part of it.
For the departmental supplies and materials, for the upgrade.
Before we did the electronic poll books that I ordered and the new computer system.
That's just what I wanted you to just tell the public, what it was for, for the...
Yeah, the state had grants available for all 55 counties, and we applied for those electronic poll books to go to every precinct, starting in 2020. We'll be doing those. Instead of the paper books where you look the voter up, we're going to be on the little tablets that I use for early voting, if anybody's familiar with those. It's quicker, more convenient, saves money, saves time. But that's what that is, and then also got a new computer system for the Elections Department that's going to have a secure, more secure to it. It's going to have a server, it's just for elections on it. But they awarded me $57,911, and then we have to do a 15% match. So the whole total for all this was like $70,000.
Any more discussion? So you moved to approve the budget revisions?
Moved through it.
No more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Line item transfers?
We have one line item transfer, and that is to transfer from 70343 automobile supplies to 70459 capital outlay equipment, the amount of $14,585. That's to cover the cost of a new cruiser purchase.
Okay. I move that we authorize that line item transfer. Is any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We've all three reviewed the bills this morning, and I would move that we pay the bills as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Presentations. Roads of honor presentation. Mr. Bob White, not here. Last week, we had a meet the candidate at White Sulphur, and Bob White was there and discussed his roads of honor. I don't know if you're aware of it, maybe we can get him on the agenda again, but they have these flags that they have put up along the streets, Main Street of White Sulphur, honoring veterans and people that were killed in the war. A year ago, I was in Bethel, Pennsylvania, and I saw the same thing there, and I thought, what a wonderful way to honor and remember the folks that has served and lost their lives in combat. And Bob White is, I think, the fellow in charge of the Vietnam Veterans Organization in White Sulphur, and they've taken that on, they've done it in White Sulphur, and they want to expand this into other towns in Greenbrier County. And I was hoping that he could be here this morning and share that with the public, and perhaps we can get him on the next month's agenda. I don't know what happened, but anyway, that was, that's the story behind that. Let me find that. This is a letter that I received September 1st. Dear Mr. Hannah, I want to congratulate your community on its application to the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System. The Department of Homeland Security, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, has verified that the voluntary actions taken by your community exceeds the minimum standards of the NFIP and meet the criteria for the CRS Class IX rating. The floodplain management activities implemented by your community qualifies it for a 5% discount in the premium cost of flood insurance for the NFIP policies issued or renewed in special flood hazard areas on or after October 1st, 2018. These savings is a tangible result of the flood mitigation activities your community implements to protect lives and reduce property damage. This savings to homeowners who have homes in floodplain areas can be contributed to our floodplain manager, Ms. Caliban. And I'd like for you to elaborate a little bit more on what this means, or what we've done to achieve this.
We are one of eight counties in the state of West Virginia. We have joined with Berkeley, Fayette, Hampshire, Jefferson, Canawha, Morgan, and Putnam Counties. There's only five cities that are part of this. The community rating system is a voluntary program, and we go through an extensive amount of paperwork. Ellie Wykel in the planning office has helped me tremendously with this. We went through an audit, which we started actually a couple months before the flood in '16, and so it kind of got put on the back burner, per the commissioners. Commissioner Hannah and I had spoke about it. We started going through the audit soon after the flood, working hard to clear up the audit and get the paperwork applied. So we got our good standing letter in May, and literally had about seven days to get the application. So we hurried along. We were very happy that we got in the program. We started with the Class IX. Our citizens will receive 5% discount on their flood insurance. They should have seen that already on their policies if they were in the county. And we are currently working for a better rating, so we're going to keep working and working to get us a bigger and bigger discount, so it's kind of exciting.
Each rating that you go down, if we go to Class VIII...
If we were at a Class VIII, we would get a 10% discount, and then they go down five points.
For each one?
That is correct.
And it is only county and special flood hazard area, right?
Well, it's only the county, and it's all policies that are floodplain policies within the county region.
Right.
So we are unable to do the cities, but the city can kind of use us if they decide their floodplain managers want to kind of come in and talk and get started on getting the cities, they can use that too, so.
Okay.
I applaud your efforts.
Thank you, Kelly.
And the work that you put into that. The citizens will benefit. And of course, you were the floodplain manager of the year for...
In '16, or in '17.
Seventeen. Caught their attention.
Yes.
All right.
Not the way I want it.
Thank you. Public comment for agenda items?
There are none.
Should we get some more chairs? Do we have, is there, Steve, let's see if there's some chairs in...
He can get my rolling chair. They're nice and heavy. It's your morning workout to lift those.
Now, if the fire marshal doesn't show up... Okay. Let's move into new business. Consider local board appointments. I guess a bit of explanation is needed. We have put off the appointment of the Airport Authority vacancy. At the last meeting, we told you we were waiting on an opinion from the Ethics Office because there had been a question raised whether somebody could serve or not. And actually, we got that response, I think, the day after our meeting the last time. Three pages from Teresa M. Kurt, staff attorney at the Ethics Commission, and basically, well, the question that we asked, if a person may be appointed to the Airport Authority that is employed by business in the area that it, the Airport Authority, services, that was concerned that this applicant, since he is an employee of the Greenbrier, that that was an ethics violation. And even though this is a three-page answer, the bottom line is, it doesn't appear to be a conflict. There is some exceptions, and I will turn this opinion over to our, Mr. Lowell Johnson, the president of the Airport Authority, so that he can review this, and there may be things that comes up on the agenda that would be a conflict, but, and he needs to be aware of that if those issues do come up. But for the majority of the time, it looks like that there is no conflict. We all have conflicts. You know, if you've been here at all the county commission meetings, there's been times that I've recused myself from voting on things that could be interpreted as being beneficial to myself or my family. And so we have to be aware of that if we sit in these positions. So, given these facts, I would move that we appoint Greg Furlong to the Airport Authority. Is any discussion?
How do you spell his last name?
If you are, L-O-N-G.
What's his title at the Greenbrier? He has a...
I don't know.
His, I don't know his exact title. What he does is sales for the Greenbrier to group sales. He goes out and contacts various corporations and groups that may come in and stay at the Greenbrier.
My main concern with Greg, reading the resumes of the three individuals that applied, was the fact that he has a business management degree, and I think that's another asset that he would bring to the table at the Airport Authority. Those folks are, represent several different specialties, aviation, and public affairs, and tourism, but I think business management is another asset that he would bring to the table, and that's the main reason that I am recommending Mr. Furlong. Any other discussion?
Well, I had hoped that we would have a compromised candidate, and I indeed do have one, but I don't think we'll get that far. But it should be said that if Greg is appointed to that board, although the Ethics Commission said there's no problem with it, he will be required probably quite often to recuse himself, so let's hope that's not a burden. Let's also hope that, that other folks that are in the, in the same business in the area, the Homestead and Snowshoe, don't feel like that they're at a disadvantage because there's a member of the Greenbrier on the board.
Any other discussion?
No. I had to ask at the last meeting that we go ahead and finalize this today. We're supposed to do that within 30 days, I think, and it's been 90 days or something, or longer. I served with Greg on the CVB, and the current CVB we have, and he is an active member, and when he was one of the people that was applied, I had occasion to talk to him and voice some concerns I had about the Greenbrier's former representative on that board, who never showed up, never contributed, and never came to a meeting unless the Greenbrier dispatched him, I guess, to be there. And he assured me that he would be an active member, make all the meetings, and that he possibly could, and, you know, I feel that he will, he will be an active member in that. He is a resident of Greenbrier County, a property owner, and registered to vote here in the county, so he meets, he checks off all the boxes. As Mr. McClung said, he had an alternative, but that person hadn't applied originally, and to turn around now, we would have to open it back up, I think, to everyone. I don't know that we want to do that and open it up for another 30 to 60 days, so I'll let the motion stand as presented.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries, two to one, with Commissioner McClung voting nay. Number two, PSD number two water line update and resolution for payment. Good morning.
Hi. Good morning. How are you?
Fine, thank you.
I have resolution number 14, and this resolution is for the Greenbrier County Public Services District number two, approving invoices relating to the construction and other services for the Sam Black Church water line extension project. And I have payment for, to tribute contracting in the amount of $8,014, and also payment to Thrasher Engineering Group in the amount of $28,982.29, for a total of the community development block grant of $36,996.29.
How about an update?
Okay.
Where are we at with the project?
They're moving along pretty well. The weather's been cooperating lately, so...
Last week.
In the last week. I did notice on the way here that they were all working, and contact, contract three is 22% complete. Contract one began September 17th, and as of October 2nd, they are 6% complete, excuse me. And contract two began work on September 24th, and they have just started their, just in, right at 10 days in the work.
The pipe going in the ground?
Yeah. I saw a pipeline on the road this morning, so...
Great. Okay. Commissioners want to offer a motion?
I'll move that we approve the payment of the resolution for 36,996.29. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Two places.
Two places?
Yep. Two places for you to sign.
Well, Commissioner Hannah's signing this, so as we said, the pipelines going in the ground, the roadboards are being done, the work on the plant at Quinnwood is well underway. And I went out and met with PSD2 about Wednesday, two weeks ago, and they voted to agree to start the design work to go from Sam Black on to out to Naseberry, through the Clintonville area. So that design work and everything can get started, and we can start applying for grants and things. So the next section of water line is underway at this point.
Have you mentioned the Charm Co. Rainell?
It's, they're working on the funding and financing, and I think by the time, by the time next year, when the...
Small cities?
Small cities will be probably through, and then the, but I think it'll be under construction, and probably by next year, we can connect all these things together. It is nearing completion as far as the grant process and everything. Leslie Taylor is working on that with PSD2, so...
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming visiting with us. Okay. Last Thursday evening, Delegate Ambler delivered us a check, and I've had to set on this check, Mr. Hegy, would you like to explain what this deals with and what it's for, how you come to get it, or how I come to get it?
This check is from the governor's office. It falls under his civil contingency fund for emergencies. In our case, back in May, when we had a fairly heavy downfall that you bring, oh, Billy, it got pretty much flooded, not only our offices, but several tenants, Mountain Lumber and the Greenbrier Valley Brewery, we got at least four inches of water in everybody's businesses. We literally, in our offices, had waterfalls coming through the ceiling. So I was aware of this fund and made a request to the governor for emergency purposes to, we get an estimate to repair, a lot of this poorly designed or just outdated, guttered downspouts and so forth. So we got an estimate and presented that, made a request in a letter form to the governor for these funds, and after several follow-ups, follow-up and begging, the governor issued us that check. Since we are, it was understood, that since we are a quasi-government agency, and the way the format is set up with the governor's office issuing checks like this, it needed to go through a local government entity, so that's why the check was presented to the Greenbrier County, who then will present our transfer number to Greenbrier Valley Economic Development Corporation.
Okay. Well, I would make a motion then that the county commission serve as a pass-through for this, this check, which is $85,988, as a pass-through for the Greenbrier Valley Economic Development Corporation. Is there any discussion?
If we vote no, can we keep it? It's got our names on it.
Got too many witnesses sitting down there. It was mine all weekend.
How much was that?
$85,988.
$85,988.
At least that's what's written on the outside. I haven't opened it.
Okay.
Okay. I think I made the motion. I'm sorry. We got off track. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
So I get it now?
Easy come, easy go. Number four, consider hiring of the emergency management 911 director. As most of you know, the last day of August was the last day that Al Whittaker served as our 911 director. He's taken a job in Charleston, Homeland Security. We, with Paula Brown and Donna Hinkle's assistant, assistance, we advertised for the job, and last Thursday evening...
Wednesday.
Wednesday evening, we interviewed three individuals. Do you know how many total people applied?
I would say there was close to 45 to 50 apply.
Forty-five or 50 people applied.
Of course, a lot of those were in deed, and they were not residents of Greenbrier County, but...
But I was, personally, I was, I was impressed with the quality of the individuals that we had applied, and especially the three that we interviewed. I think any of the three could do the job, and I wasn't sure when we advertised this whether we would get somebody that would impress us, but I was. us, but I was. And I would like to recommend to my fellow Commissioners, Mr. David Michael Honnicker as the new 911 EMS Director. And you all were there also, what were your all's feelings?
Well, all I could really do is echo what you just said. I was very pleasantly surprised in such a positive way. This was, well, we did, we had three individuals that were very, very legitimate candidates, and I'm pleased to support your motion.
Same way, we had, when you get three guys, the quality, well, we had a lot of people that were good, but the three guys that we interviewed were a little more qualified than the rest, quite a bit. And to get three guys of that caliber to come in and interview and be interested in working for the county, and they all said that any of the three of them, if they did not get chosen for the job, they still wanted to be active in the county and maybe serve on the board up there and things, so, but they were real, very, very qualified individuals. Mike Connicker, who Mr. Hanna is recommending, you know, I won't go through his whole resume, but his extremely impressive resume, and he's an extremely qualified guy. I think everybody will be very happy and very impressed with the quality, the caliber of the candidate we got, so I agree with the nomination.
Mr. Honnicker is a former Marine, and he's also a retired State of Virginia State Policeman. So...
He was originally, originally from Greenbrier County, lived in Ronsford, Alderson area and Fairleigh area, and he's living in this area now, and, but he was a toss-up, as he told us. When he come out of the Marines, he wanted to go into the state troopers, and he applied West Virginia, and they would have accepted him, but had been 10 months down the road, and Virginia said, "We'll take you right now," so he went to Virginia. But he could have very well been a West Virginia State Trooper, he was accepted there too. But he is a West Virginia, he was born, raised here in Greenbrier County, so...
Okay, no more discussion, all in favor of offering Mr. Honnicker the job, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I will ask, by the way, we did do a background check, and probably the fellow's done thousands of them on other folks, but we did one on him, and of course, he come back fine. I will have Mr. Honnicker at our next meeting to introduce him to the public. I think you'll be impressed. Okay, public comment?
There is none.
There are none.
Okay, any announcements?
Yeah, I would like to say that voter registration deadline is October 16th. Anyone that wants to get registered for the upcoming general election, and early voting will be starting on Wednesday, October 24th, and run through November 3rd here at the courthouse from 8:00 to 4:30, and the two Saturdays, 9:00 to 5:00. And then at the Rupert Community Center, it's going to start on October 29th and run through Friday, November 2nd, from 8:30 to 4:30.
Hey, thank you. This is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Normally, we have a presentation, a reef hanging, the reef has been hung, but we don't have anyone here to speak, but keep that in your thoughts. Also, this is National 4-H Week. The Extension Service is bringing a little presentation to the next meeting. The evening meeting suits better to get students here than the morning meeting, so they'll be at our next meeting. Any other announcements?
At our last meeting, when Ms. Dents was there, and I made mention of trying to get all the different entities together, talk about the airport flights, things of that nature, I know that's a slight, maybe more than a slight bit of contention between the airport and CVB at this point. But I would try, like for all the members of those entities to be there, we've got that meeting set for, it's not really a big, open, public meeting, but it's open, has to be, we're going to be there. But we'll discuss as much of the things about tourism in the county and the airport in particular as we can, but that's 9 o'clock Thursday morning, so it is set up. And I would urge members of all the entities involved to try to be there.
Where is that law, I'm sorry?
CVB. But it's, I would urge, urge all the members, all the principals to be there if possible. It's just like I said at the last meeting, when I mentioned it, and Kara took the ball and ran with it, but there's, the two groups haven't been, haven't been working together. And it's happened over the last 20 years, not just now. It's been a long time. The, and the CVB sent out some letters without discussing some matters with the Airport Authority and, or the Airport Management Room, the Authority, and it's caused even more of a little grip. And the reason I'm making that public, the only way I can get these folks together is if I kind of rauled it them a little bit. So, I want to get them in the same room and talk with them, and try to get something worked out, and at least if I don't get them together, get them on the same page, at least I want to just have a dialogue going between them, so. Anyway, that is, we are going to do that Thursday morning. And hopefully, it's not going to be a very long meeting, but it'll be a start, so, anyway, just wanted to mention that.
Okay, yes, sir.
It is Bob, Mr. Rose. I have TSA Regional Director with me Thursday, it was already scheduled, and I have two big charters on that day, I may not be able to attend, but we'll do the best we can. By happenstance, we are having a committee meeting for an air service convention of the Zers Bureau Friday at 10 o'clock in the airport, it's posted publicly. I have a copy of it in my bag there, and we're not, we're not trying to, this is not a division. And some things I took at the last meeting, and I'm sorry, I didn't sign up for public comment, when I said that it didn't take much money or much effort to maintain the status quo, frankly, I was not speaking of anybody else in the room, except maybe for the airport itself. That's what I was thinking when I said it. We're not trying to be ever more divisive. Our job is to serve the people of this region and ensure that no matter what happens with essential air service or anything else, that we are insulated from any possible downturn, and that we continue to bear the accountability. So, if you'd like to attend Friday, as we discuss some dialogues and incorporating documents, you'd be more than welcome.
Thank you, sir.
That's at the airport?
10 o'clock, Friday, South Criminal, just outside Landings Restaurant.
Any other announcements? Okay, the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion carries, meeting adjourned. Thanks again for everyone attending.